I know, so then the person has a month to spare. So then it just will be over.
What?
Policy.
Yes, yes.
It's different.
It's one that was.
Women's different.
No better way to describe it.
Here you go.
It's fun, yeah, it's fun.
On TV. It's like, I think it's a boy.
Does he like climb, does he like pick people up and make fun of them?
Yeah.
Does he like pick people up and make fun of them?
Yeah.
That was always my favorite part. He should just make talking.
Did he use Dylan as a kid in your class?
Yeah, I think Taylor just, it's nothing, whatever his daughter says.
Yeah, well, I think he was funny.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call this regular November Lebanon Board of Education meeting to order. The time is seven thirty-two. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to get started. We do have a recognition this evening. We'd like to welcome Dawn to the board. Dawn, could you pronounce your last name?
Jacques.
Jacques, okay, great. Dawn Jacques, welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to have you here with us.
Welcome, Dawn.
Thank you.
Awesome. So the first item on the agenda is a collection of board education officers. At this point, I will accept nominations for board of education chair.
I'll nominate Dawn for chair.
Richard.
Be more specific.
Yeah.
You're gonna say Dawn, I'm gonna decline.
I'm gonna decline.
I'm declining.
I'll nominate Dawn Witcher for chair.
Great, thank you, Rachel. Are there any other nominations? Sherry?
I'd like to nominate Brian.
Okay, Brian. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, we will close nominations. At this point, we will vote for chair of board of education. Denell, did you have anything you wanted to discuss or no?
Well, we could just go, but, well, I would like to say that I appreciate having you as the board of ed chair for my entire tenure here, started in 2020. I wasn't prepared to say these remarks, but as soon as you said that, I'm like, let me say something. I think you've done.
That's not my name.
I know, I think you've done a tremendous job leading the group, keeping us focused, sharing your opinion when you needed to, but always asking us for ours first. I know you're in great communication with Andy all the time, and you've set the bar high for this position. And I did attend meetings before you took over and years before that, and I, again, I say that you've done a very excellent, impressive job.
Great, happy to meet you. All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we will take a vote. All those in favor of Dawn Witcher becoming board of education chair, please raise your hand. Yeah, that is Dawn, Rachel, Alexis, Sarah, Nicole. All those in favor of Brian Green, please raise your hand. That is Sherry, Brian, Denell, and Dawn. Dawn Jake?
Jacques.
I'm so sorry.
You can say it.
Dawn, thank you. All right, congratulations, Dawn Witcher. All right, now I will accept nominations for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair? Dawn.
I nominate Rachel.
Rachel, do you accept? I should have asked that before you raised, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Rachel. Sherry?
Brian.
Brian, do you accept? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? We'll close nominations. All those in favor of Rachel Archer, vice chair, please raise your hand. That is Dawn, Rachel, Sarah, and that's it. All those in favor of Brian, please raise your hand. That is Sherry, Brian, Nicole, Denell, Alexis, and Dawn.
Jacques.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations, Brian. Now, accept the nominations for secretary. Are there any nominations for secretary? Dawn?
I nominate, no.
Do you accept?
Sure.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Closing nominations. All those in favor of Denell as board of education secretary, that is unanimous. Congratulations to our board of education. Awesome, we're just gonna take about a two-minute recess just to get kind of reorganized, and then we will hop back into action in just a couple minutes. Thank you so much.
You have two minutes to figure it out.
Okay, where am I going? Oh, all right.
Oh, I'm gonna be sandwiched by the two of you. What's that?
Just go where I'm told.
I, it's. Nice sitting next to you. You're on.
In the short time we sat together.
Well, now I can look at each other. Yeah. All right, you want to run a policy committee? That's the first order of. Oh, it's a bylaw. I think it does. I think it does.
Look at this, we're all in a row now.
To sit together.
I've never been on this side, so I'm actually excited.
You're sitting in my seat.
I don't, I don't know.
No, I totally have access next time.
Right here. They should take office immediately upon election. Immediately.
Yeah, for elections at the end.
Oh, we could move it, but order, oh. It would make way more sense. I know.
Not worried at all.
Feel free to weigh it.
We're like a pillow.
Yeah, you can see that, John. Let's go. Clock's ticking.
Still got it, don't worry.
Just give me a second here in the middle. I know. Not these chairs.
Next on the agenda is the subcommittee assignments. Most everybody has done things before, but for those who haven't, make sure that you throw out your preferences of which subcommittees you would like to be on. We'll collect those at the end of the night. I do also want to point out that Brian and I have the same term ending date. So as we get to the end of this particular season or year, something that we'll have to keep in mind, we will decide more. Next on the agenda is public participation, and in accordance with Connecticut state statute, we provide thirty minutes for individuals to speak with a maximum of two minutes. Is there any individual that would like to speak? We will move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as per habit.
Second.
Motion by Alexis, seconded by Brian. Any discussion? Seeing none, which will, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Next up, student representatives.
Um, to kick us off at the elementary school, yes. To kick us, to kick us off at the elementary school, they held their first book fair the week of the twenty-eighth. They also hosted a spooky bingo night on the twenty-fifth, sounded like fun. They held a unity day to celebrate kindness throughout the school and community. Just last week, they hosted a science, technology, engineering, art, and math for STEAM night, and I heard that students got to make paper airplanes, so that sounded like a lot of fun amongst other things. Um, they just hosted, just last week, this past Friday, Veterans Day breakfast, so LES has been very busy. Down at the middle school, they had their first spirit day, and they had a game where I don't, I don't even know what it was called, but Mr. Johnson sent me pictures of it, and they, like, the teachers wore like these really baggy sweatshirts and they like stuffed like dodgeballs in the teachers' like sweatshirts, and they like, I don't know, he called it like something like puff or something like marshmallow man, I don't know, but it looked like fun. For sports, the middle school boys cross-country team defended their NEM SAC champion title. Up here at Lyman, we just finished our first quarter last week, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, we finished the quarter with a fun spirit week and pep rally featuring a students versus teachers volleyball game and Lyman's contemporary ensemble. Sports seasons have also ended here at Lyman, and Cassidy has a report on there.
For sports, Hazel Delusha won ECC's Open and Girls Open for cross-country, also setting a new course record of nineteen point sixteen, beating the old one by point fifteen seconds. Hazel Delusha placed sixteenth out of two hundred fifty-six people at the New England Cross-Country Championships and got a place on the New England Cross-Country Team. The Lyman Cross-Country Team won CIAC Championships. Girl soccer team won ECC's Emily McKelvey, the junior, was the most outstanding player of the game, and Miss Morella won Coach of the Year. Lyman Boys Soccer Team won their division zero, eight to zero, and qualified for the ECC tournament and won their first state game for the first time in five years.
That was all we have for this meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
But does anyone have any questions?
I just want to add that the cross-country team also won the Class S State Championship. Girls.
That's a great thing happening with this one. Awesome, thank you very much. Next, we have reports of committees. I have not put them around the table because I'm not, it's all open right now, it's not changed. So I'm gonna start with Denell, strategic planning.
We did not meet. We are meeting Tuesday, Thursday.
Thursday, right.
At six o'clock, I think.
And any update from climate and culture?
We have not met since the last board meeting either.
Four o'clock.
For Killam.
And is that the, at the middle school?
Yes.
Nicole, facilities.
Okay, facilities met this evening. First thing on our agenda was talking about the Lyman Auditorium project, which is now completed, so all three phases of changing over the lighting in the auditorium are now complete. Next was the solar project at Lyman. This is something that has been being discussed for years now. I guess there are news, state incentives that are coming out to potentially put solar panels on top of Lyman's roof so that all three schools can have solar. So a couple of things that need to be addressed, which is, first of all, the cost savings for putting in solar at Lyman. The roof will also have to be assessed and see if it can even support solar panels. John will continue to communicate with Adam Teff of, John, what's he fro, what's the company he works for again?
Titan.
Titan, right. Yep, so John will continue to keep us informed on that. Next is the indoor air quality inspections, which state is now requiring an assessment, and the assessments all have to be completed by 2030. John has started looking into companies. We're not sure where the funding will come out of yet, either operating our facilities, and John will keep us informed to this project. Next, we talked about the L, uh, Lyman track. The track is deteriorating, so we will, our, our chair, our new chair, will make a long-term committee meeting with the town to assess the needs and see where the next steps are. The cost of replacing or fixing the track would be roughly under five hundred thousand. Then finally, we talked about access control. The funding has already been approved for this, and they can be accessed, so our next steps are applying for a waiver for the three companies that we got estimates from to make sure they meet all the state compliances. And that's it, I think.
Any questions here, Nicole?
Okay.
Um, next, I have Alexis negotiations.
Um, Denell report as well as safety and security.
Brian, policy.
Yes, ma'am. So we met tonight. Policy nine zero one five, we had discussion on. We were good for the most part on the policy, but there was section one C that we need some clarity from shipment, so we are asking Andy to take that back. Policies four zero zero six, six zero zero nine, five zero two seven, six zero one five. We all agreed we should move forward. We had no issues with those. Policy number six zero zero three, basically, we say we want to, we should comply with policy five zero two one, and then we also, since we do not require board approval for fundraising, we agreed to have remove, removing board approval. Makes sense for that policy as well in six zero zero three. Policy number thirty-four fifty-one, Andy and Martha got a quote from our current auditor to look at our student activity funds and that whole process. There was quite an astronomical dollar amount associated with that, so we're not gonna go that route. Did make some suggestions to the superintendent on perhaps another direction, another accounting firm or something we can look at first to try to get, to help the business office out, take some pressure off of them, also hopefully less than what we were quoted for the other thing, and then we should be able to get a policy in place after that, the dollars are accounted for and cleaned up. Policy six zero one two, had discussion on that one, really just a couple of language updates from page one. The, the main thing was had it having these, the curriculum changes available at the Lebanon library for fourteen days. And then lastly, policy one zero one six, we had much discussion on that policy, but at the end of the day, we voted to move that forward.
Any questions for Brian? Brian, would you remind us that at times policies weren't to come to the board? What are examples, like what's the difference between these coming and?
So if there, if there's simple changes that were updates, you know, minor changes that the superintendent's able, that were just able to blend these policies together that came either through shipment and Goodwin or Cave, those will come through in the background. The superintendent, we gave the superintendent purview to go ahead and take care of those so that everything doesn't have to come through policy. If they were just, you know, minor language changes or, or updates, they forgot a period, a comma, whatever. Anything that's more substantial or substantive than that needs to come back.
Any questions?
Just to give an example, for policy four thousand six that we reviewed tonight, the word district was in lowercase, and they changed the recommendation to have a capital D. Those are minor, minor technical things that I would not bring to the board. Or when it was talking about completing a application, instead of his or her, it used applicant. Those are things I would not bring to you.
Rachel, thanks.
We met this evening. The two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget is on track at the moment. However, there is some potential increases on the horizon for special education out placements for new students that we are gonna be watching carefully over the next few months. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget, all the request forms have been sent to the schools and returned by the principals and department heads. Those are being looked at now to put together a budget book. One note, for example, the insurance that we currently locked into last year is eleven percent, we cannot go more than eleven percent increase, and could be a potential savings because not expected to find anything cheaper than that in shopping around for insurance. So using that as an example, with just that insurance and contractual obligations, we could potentially be looking at a significant increase this year. So I know over the next several months that Andy, Martha, and the subcommittee are going to be digging deep into our numbers to prepare a responsible budget for the next fiscal year.
Uh, just for clarification, thank you, Rachel. The special education costs for this year are not potential. They, they are costs that we've taken on, but they potentially will impact the end of our overall budget expenditures.
Any questions? You know, now's the time that we talk about the current and then the future, the next budget. Can you just give us a brief reminder of what that timeline kind of looks like and what we should expect?
Sure. So back in October, the budget forms were sent out to teachers, department leads. Our principals compiled those results, put them together in their budget books, which are many times electronic now, and submitted them to me at the end of October. Martha and I reviewed them in the first week of November and had budget meetings with principals and other administrators to review the initial requests. Martha and I will now be looking through those budget books with more of a fine-tooth comb, looking for increases, examining the justification, and I'll be tasked with the difficult job of potentially making some cuts to bring what I consider to be the most responsible budget back to the subcommittee for further review. So we'll have another subcommittee meeting in December. At that time, we'll be looking at individual line items and discussing potential cuts. January is a time that I'll be going to the individual buildings, having presentations at staff meetings, taking some input from them, also doing some community presentations, trying to solicit input from them as to things that they think should be in the budget that currently aren't, or where, where they think that we should be cutting. Later in January, or potentially in February, depending on how we're progressing, I will be making the superintendent budget presentation to you all. You will make a determination if you're ready to accept that budget as yours, as the board of education. Then you adopt that budget, make it the board of education budget, and the next step from there, we'll be presenting to the board of finance. After it's presented to the board of finance, they make their decision, and then it will be up to the town for voting.
Thank you. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee did not meet, but I wanted to offer a friendly reminder that the seven standards that we evaluate the superintendent on are in front of you so that you can, yes, so that you can take notes throughout the year on the other things that happened a couple months ago. Um, the, the timeline for the evaluation is bringing us to mid-year now, so I will communicate that to whoever is the chair to make sure that they follow the information needed. Um, Sarah, do you want to touch on governance?
Um, sure. Just a couple of things I did share with you, Dawn. There's a new board member orientation coming up on December third. If you're interested, I'd share it via email, so take a peek at it. Don't forget for everybody to take advantage of those cave webinars or cave conferences. They are pretty beneficial, even if you just have opportunities to chat with folks from other towns and their boards. It's kind of nice to see things from different perspectives, how we kind of operate and then share that with other boards of ed's operating. I found it really beneficial. I'll make sure that you get access to that, that email, like the cave shares.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you'll be on that.
And I did register for the December third, so join me. I'd like to.
That would be great.
Awesome. And then the only other piece.
Oops, I'm so sorry.
The only other piece that, I think Andy, Andy's gonna be addressing it later, is just the school study update. You know, we did have the town meeting a few weeks ago. It was very well attended, I thought. Slim did a presentation on the school study. They did a pretty thorough job for the amount of work that went into that presentation in the short amount of time they had to present. There were a lot of really great questions, I thought, that the community kind of brought up, you know, and the school study committee will be reconvening on November twentieth. There you go, Mr. Gonzalez, that's one thing you don't have to.
Any questions for Sarah? Um, I have Sherry as East Con rep.
I cannot do that.
Okay. Um, I'm still a little unclear on what the East Con rep does. Do you have?
I do.
Or do you do Sarah thing?
Yeah, sure do. So it's essentially, it's another board that we just have representation on with East Con. East Con, obviously, they have services that they provide to districts, but they also have school district that they run. So it's just another seat on that East Con board. We are always, a chair is always available to us if, if we like to take advantage of that. It is a lot of work also to sit on that board and, and, you know, just like being on this board, it's not an easy task. There's a lot of wo, work with us to go into it. So if anybody could do it, it'd be great.
I would encourage people to go to their website. If you have a dot org email, you're entitled to take advantage of their classes, and they have a plethora of things that they offer. I was very involved with it when I was teaching, but I'm not able to, with the health conditions that we father-in-law, you know, the family's all coming together on that, and so I'm not able to. But you don't even have to be in that seat to go to the website and take advantage of all kinds of things they offer. And you just register with your board of ed email, and it's free.
Thank you. Okay, administrators' reports. We have reports in our board packet. Would anyone like to add to the report? Any questions for the administrators' report?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. And somebody earlier said there was a lot going on in the district and a lot to celebrate, so I decided in the superintendent report to take some time to add to some of those celebrations. So one thing that has not been talked about publicly. So one thing that has not been talked about publicly was that we receive recognition through the Connecticut Association of Board of Education for several of our publications and communications. So earlier this year, I submitted work from across our district to CAPE as part of the 2024 Bonnie B. Carney Awards of Excellence for Educational Communication, and was recently notified that several of our projects were recognized by CAPE. For districts with an average daily membership of less than 2,000, we were recognized for the development and use of district websites and social media accounts. Additionally, we were recognized for the school superintendent update and the 24-25 budget presentation. Our district will be celebrated at the annual Connecticut of Association of Board of Education and Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents Conference, which is being held next week in Mystic. So some nice recognition for our districts. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in the development of those publications and communications.
Congratulations, Dawn.
Continuing the celebrations, on Friday, November 1st, several students from our Agriculture, Science, and Technology Education Program traveled to UConn to compete in career and development experiences, and members of our livestock judging, milk quality, and horse evaluation teams won and earned themselves an opportunity to compete at the Future Farmers of America Convention next fall. So congratulations to Taylor Lawrence, William Wilds, Ally Stokowski, Ella Allen, Ava Podowski, Austin Ross, Nora Johnson, Jaden Ladustia, and Morgan Hayes. Some of the next things here were, were already hit on, but since I put something together in writing, I'm going to share again. It never hurts. So on the sports front, cross-country, our girls' cross-country team at Lyman had quite the season. They captured the regular season championship, then followed that up with winning the overall Eastern Connecticut Conference Championship. They kept up their winning ways by taking home the Class S state championship. And just this past weekend, we had an athlete, Hazel DeLucia, garner All-New England honors. During the season, she had also been recognized as ECC Athlete of the Week, ECC Runner of the Year, and an All-State Performer. So some great things being done on the cross-country team. Congratulations also to Coach Chantel Fields, who was named the Eastern Conference Connecticut Coach of the Year, and George Gray, as well as all of the student athletes who I thought really represented our school in an amazing way. Soccer, both our boys and girls soccer team won the ECC Division Four regular season. And then, as it was noted in the student rep report, the girls took home the ECC Division Two Tournament Championship with Emily McKelvey being named Most Outstanding Player. Moving on, the steam night on Thursday, November 7th, at the elementary school was well-attended, and there was a lot of fun-filled science and technology, engineering, and math activities. I thought it was a true family event. Many of our staff brought their own family members back and ran the stations, and we also had students from participating, from local universities who participated in running the event. So it was great. The elementary school and the middle school followed that night up by doing a special breakfast and a touching tribute to our community veterans. One of the best days in the district. It's very well-attended, heartwarming experience, and we are extremely grateful and appreciate the attendance of our veterans and all they have done for our country. So kind of kudos all around, a lot to celebrate in the district. I'll move on next to the Accountability Index Analysis. So you have this 11-by-17 paper with a lot of bright colors in front of you. I'll try to walk you through this carefully so that you understand where my analysis will take us. So recently, the Connecticut State Department of Ed released performance data and the associated Accountability Index ratings for district review. So how I did this, you'll see across the top, there's the three different colors that signal the different year of the index ratings. And then if you see green, the green highlight means we improved from last year to this year. If you see yellow, that means it's the highest over the three-year period. The red, that's not highlighted, the red font, means that we went down. And then all the way to the right, the fuchsia color shows that that's the, the lowest over the three, that, that's an area that we were lower than the state in that indicator. So I'm happy that you should see that there's much more green and yellow, which shows that we've either improved year over year, or that it's the highest in the past three years, and I'm going to walk you through that a little bit more. So out of the 20 indicators from the year 22-23 to 23-24, we improved in 14 of them, and six of the 20 were the highest performing since the COVID pandemic years, stretching three years back. Our English Language Arts performance for all students and those categorized as high needs both improved, and more importantly, the academic growth for each of the aforementioned groups was the highest it's been in the past three years. This was important to see because we were piloting new reading programs in some classes at the elementary school, as well as utilizing new phonics resources. I feel that we can also attribute this to the careful use of the iReady diagnostic tool and the other assessment utilized in the district. Math and science performance for all students also ticked up from 22-23 to 23-24 year. I ask you to please keep in mind that we implemented a new math program in grades K through eight not long ago, and all studies have shown that there's traditionally a dip. So while we may not have advanced as far as we'd like to see in the future, we did not have that dip, which was nice to see. Our district is also trying to be very careful with how we're using interim assessments, and we hope to see continued growth there. Chronic absenteeism for all students dropped significantly, which is the way we want it to go. Most times, we're looking for things to increase. This was something that had a significant drop. If you remember, not long ago, we had goals for the district to create a sense of belonging for all of our learners, and I feel that we were very successful in doing that, as well as enhancing our attendance protocols within the buildings, with our committees, to reach out to students and to families who are struggling to get to school regularly or on time. Our index ratings are the highest they have been since 21-22 for the percentage of students taking college and career readiness courses, being on track for graduation, and for post-secondary entrance. Additionally, the access to arts rating improved significantly. Our district was above the state average in all but two categories. And this year, based on our analysis of this same type of data from last year, we've placed an emphasis on mathematics, which has been shown in our 24-25 district goals. We've reorganized staff and structures to be able to provide targeted instruction and interventions. And as I just mentioned, we're carefully looking at district data through our warehousing system, ION, and engaging students in the interim assessments that are curated by the State Department of Ed. And I think most importantly, we've made it a priority to use a more inclusive approach in our district with professional development, providing our special educators and classroom tier-one instructors with more support to provide an increase with time with non-disabled peers for all of our learners. And by increasing the time with our special education to have high-quality tier-one instruction, we're optimistic that their growth is going to improve on next year's assessment. So there's a lot of information on this chart, a lot of numbers. Tried to distill it down and, and color-code it this way so that it's somewhat easy to digest. Again, if I'm going back to make a summary, I'm proud to say that we've had most improvement year to year, and that we're seeing some things that have been trending over the three-year period, and that our target areas for the 24-25 goals are in line with what we're seeing from the data that shows that we have the biggest room for improvement. So this is one data point, but it is a big data point. This is what the state is using to measure our schools. I'm also happy to see, and we're going to be having ongoing conversations, our building-level administrators have already taken their individual buildings and started making some thoughts-for-action plans, and those are things that you'll see in next year's goals. This is one of the, the biggest performance indicators that we use when we're setting our district and building goals. So a lot of information there. I don't know if you have any questions on, on information that I shared with you today. It doesn't have to be asked at this meeting. It could be asked in an email or a follow-up communication, and I can take those questions and provide a presentation or another explanation at a future meeting.
I guess there's one question.
Yeah.
What does it mean by points earned? What does that figure into this?
Which category? Are you talking about the percentage or like, there, because there's several, like, if you look, there's ones that says point earns, there's ones that says percentage of points earned. And it's really a formula that's created by the state. I can get you a breakdown of how all of those are, are created, if you'd like.
Is that to rank the schools?
Yeah, so this all goes into creating an overall accountability index, and they have like a, a target that every school is working towards. But I guess if you put them in order of who had the highest number of points earned and what their highest percentage, you could say that they were ranked in that way, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
I think the color coding helped.
Yeah, and, and the last thing that was under the superintendent report was the school study update, which Sarah did a great job highlighting pretty much spot-on to what I was going to say. I think the only thing that I would add to that is that I think all of the questions in some way or another came back to where are we going to get the money, and how is this going to be funded? I think there were some that really supported the outcomes, some that still had questions, but ultimately, they both kind of met in the middle with, okay, we have all of this information, it's kind of giving us a game plan for what we need to do, whether we agree or don't agree, but where are we going to get the money? And I think that's what the subcommittee will be tasked with on the 20th, is talking about now that this study is complete, what are we going to do, and how do we, how do we move forward?
Just one more quick question. How are high needs defined? Is that, yeah, what are the high needs?
Special education students that have individual education plans.
Okay. Does that include anyone that's absent, is that absentee? Is it just special?
Special education.
Already some of the highlights of the 24-25 were gone over in the committee reports. We're mostly on track. We're running around close to the five-year average. We are monitoring special education outplacement costs due to some new students that have moved into the district, so there was some unbudgeted expenses associated with that. So we are monitoring that for the non-lapsing. We, we don't have much of a change from last time. We are looking at with a projected balance with ongoing projects right now of $89,962.72. We did have some projects that, you know, were moved forward, and they're all accounted for in that number.
Now we move to action items. First item is the 25 board meeting deeds. If you are following along the packet, mine is on page 39. Should we be up?
I make a motion to approve those dates?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Sarah. Any discussion?
Just be mindful of the June 10th date. If we were to not have any weather events or changes in the calendar, it could be close to a graduations with the elementary moving up, the middle school promotion, or high school graduation. And just as a reminder, we do not meet in July, but we typically do our Board of Ed retreat in that month.
When is the last day of school right now?
Any administrator out there counting down the days? Do we know that? I don't know.
I was just, I was just pulling up just to see when that was. June, right now, it looks like June 11th is the last day.
We'll have a day. We'll have a day. Yeah, for sure. Also, I'm so sorry. Also, November is the 3rd, Tuesday, on purpose because of the election.
Any further discussion?
Is this for all the action items?
Right now, it's only the, on the 2025 board meeting deeds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is the unanimous. Next, Act on allocating 2023-2024 remaining funds to the non-lapsing account. Right of motion. Any further discussion? Motion to allocate the 2023-24 remaining funds to the non-lapsing account.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Sarah.
Just as a reminder, there was legislation that recently changed how these funds moved from the operating budget into the non-lapsing account. Previously, I would have to write a request to the Board of Finance. They would make a determination if those funds could go into non-lapsing, as well as the amount. That is now within our purview, so we, as a board, thought it would still be appropriate to follow this process to make that happen.
Just as a reminder, the dollar amount.
Did you hear the question?
I'm not sure. Is it the 89,000?
No, that's how much is left. We're trying to find what the surplus was from last year to transfer.
That's what we voted to put in the non-lapsing budget?
Excuse me?
With the surplus that year.
From the last year's operating, yeah.
The most.
I have 127,432,50.
Sounds right.
Can you say that again?
127,432, and 51,000. Is that all right? Again, that was from 12,000.
Nice job, Alexis. Thanks, Martha.
Can you take 8,000 out of that or something else?
That's, sure, that, that's, that's already been factored into, if it's what we need to move into. We're just, that's already been factored in.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is the unanimous. At, out-of-state field trip request in your packet, it is page 40 and 44.
Make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request.
Second.
I have a question.
Second. Motion by Sarah, second by Nicole. Sheri, what is your question?
There was a figure of 700, 600 per student. Is that at the student's expense?
Yeah, this does not use Board of Ed operating funds. These are self-funded, yep.
Sounds like a fabulous story. Can I?
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And a unanimous. Next is Act on breaks for substitute students and secretary, which starts on page 42, or is it? is it 42? Do I have a motion?
Move to, sorry, Nicole.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the substitute custodian and secretary rates.
Second. Motion by Sarah, second by Nicole. Any discussions?
What page was that on?
42. That's minimum wage.
Starting on January 1st, 2025, minimum wage will increase to 1635. So, this would put us a little bit above minimum wage.
So, it's so hard to get. So, sorry, we have to vote on this because our minimum right now is below minimum wage. So, we have to pass this, right?
I guess if we're being very specific, you don't have to pass it at $16.50. You could pass it at $16.35, but we're proposing that we move it to 1650.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. I have seen none of us. Can I act on second reading of EOE policies, which start on page 43?
So, we have policies 2001, 3005, 5004, 5006, 1003, 4012, 5018, and 1016. I make a motion, these are all for second reading, so I make a motion that we approve.
Motion by Brian, second by Alexis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is your name. Items for next agenda.
I have a question. Is there an update on all the monies coming into the board? In other words, what we've been allocated from the town, grants, tuition from attending students? Is there like a master list updated of what is actually coming into Board of Ed?
So, I always refer to what starts on page 31. Does that include the board actions?
So, you want to know how much money we are bringing in with tuition, grants, and what else?
Federal funding, state funding, Board of Finance.
Well, the Board of Fin-
Where everything's coming from.
I mean, if you look at the overall operating budget, that's given to you in your monthly report. That tells you how much money we have that was voted on by the town, which was appropriated by the Board of Finance. That, you're not going to find grants and federal funding and everything in that report.
But those are usually reported on separately.
Yeah, that's what I just wondered. How much are we getting in grants?
Or from the state.
Or from the state, or just tuition, just the big picture, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Development.
Yeah, so I think it was last month that Rita gave us a whole list of grants, and I kept it because I think it's interesting to see all the money that we got from grants. And she put it out with the active grants, how much it's for, and the period, and the funds remaining in each one. I can give you a copy if you want a copy of that.
And typically, Sherry, when I do the budget presentation for you all and for the town, I have slides that are dedicated to that. It's not something that we have historically reported on, like, monthly.
I don't mean monthly, for this one year.
Sure. Would it be acceptable to you into the board if I did that in my typical fashion in the budget report, or would you like something separate?
It doesn't matter to me. I would just like, you know, what was last year, you know, 2324. And then, after this school year, you know, 2425, just for comparison and seeing where the picture.
Yep.
By next week.
Sherry, basically, I get the income portion of it that you're looking at. I just want to make sure that you're clear that as far as what's appropriated, and that the Board of Finance is appropriated to the Board of Education use, that's coming through your monthly board packet.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that you're-
I just wondered, that's not all we operate on, or with, I should say.
No, certainly, there are other funds that do come in to that. I think it'd probably be helpful in order to not send Martha on a, if you have specific questions related to that, you know, certainly, you can send them over to Andy, and you can maybe incorporate those as part of the annual budget. He does, you know, talk about that when we do need him.
Well, I could break it down and say, how much for the 2324 school year, how much did we receive in grants?
Well, no, I think he's got that part. What I meant is, if you had any specific questions that you were looking for information within funding, then certainly, you could build that into.
I think she wants to break down all the funding coming in.
Yeah, that's it.
She wants to know where all the funding is coming from and what it is.
Yes, I think Andy's been very clear on where it goes and what we're doing with it, and we discussed it.
And again, that's part of what he does annually.
Yeah, that part I'm clear on.
But he does provide that to us, annually part of it.
Yeah.
There's just another, also another component and factor while we're gathering that information is also the amount of money that is going to the town through our student, from our students. So, like, tuition or grants that are, is it X? It's not excess cost, is it, Martha? Maybe I'm speaking ECG or ECS. Yeah, that type of funding that gets filtered right to the town. So, it doesn't actually come back.
So, that would have to be subtracted from this?
Not really, not from us. It goes to the town.
No, it never comes to us.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, we don't see that.
I also wondered, there's been a figure thrown out of the cost per student is somewhere in the 20,000. And that's pretty much everywhere in the state. But I wondered, when we have students coming in, there's towns, is the tuition 6,000? And how is that, how is that, to me, that says it's very expensive to take these students from the town? I mean, I could be completely wrong. But this is partly why I wanted to see the big picture.
I do want to be careful that we don't stray from the agenda, but I do want to recognize any flagrant as well.
Yeah. So, I can do a refresher on what, because the 6,000-ish figure that you're referring to is a portion of the ASTI tuition that is paid by the district, which is supplemented by funds from the state. Then, the other tuition figure that you're talking about is if it was an out-of-district student who tuitioned, and we do not charge them their per-pupil expenditure costs because there are things that we don't have to account for, transportation, staffing, et cetera. I did have a member of the State Finance Board, I could be saying the entity wrong, but come in and do a presentation at one point, too, because all of those different calculations as to what goes into those things are somewhat complicated. So, that could be something down the road we could look into doing again, if you'd like.